Good evening, welcome everyone. I am Tamara Blake Wallace Deputy Director of Planning and Acting Planning Commission Administrator. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting allowing for both virtual and in-person participation. This meeting is being recorded on both audio and video for record-keeping purposes. If you are attending virtually by phone, please keep yourself muted to ensure no interruptions to this evening's meeting. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to the Chairman to determine a quorum.
Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, July 16th, 2005 Meeting of the Calver County Planning Commission. To determine a quorum, I'll take attendance Commissioner Berry.
Here.
Commissioner Freeland.
Here.
Commissioner Kernan.
Present.
Commissioner McQueen.
Here.
Commissioner Weems.
Here.
And last but not least Commissioner Gadwick.
Present.
Thank you, sir. So we have full attendance, we are now called to order. If you'd all be so kind to stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is action on the proposed agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I move that we modify the order of tonight's agenda by moving item 10A and 11 to below item 5 as it currently is.
Thank you, sir. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Berry? All those in favor?
Aye.
Does any object? Therefore, it passes, we've changed the order. Also, we have the summary of actions in front of us from last month's meeting. Any changes required, or can we get a motion for acceptance?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and adopt the summary of actions for the June 18th, 2025 regular meeting.
Thank you, sir. We have a second?
I'll second that.
And I have a second also? All those in favor?
Aye.
Everyone's, that was everyone, right? Passes with all. Alrighty, recognition of persons, Thorne?
We have here with us tonight from Planning and Zoning Director Jason Brinkley, Rachel O'Shea Deputy Director of Zoning, Tay Harris Long Range Planner, Ron Marney Environmental Planner. We have Will Hager Planner 3, Amaya Pleak Tam Planner 3, Jay Cousineau Planner 3. We have Charlene Johnson Planner 2. We have Kelsey Holland with us tonight, Office Assistant 2 from Planning and Zoning. And we also have Becky Parkinson as our Planning Commission Clerk and John Mattingly serving as our Legal Counsel. Tonight, we have three special guests with us. From the Board of Education, we have Dr. Susan Johnson Chief Operations Officer, Cecilia Lewis Director of Student Services, and Shashida Warner Director of School Construction. That brings us to item 6, Major Subdivisions for Final Review and Action. Nope, I'm sorry. That brings us to item 10A, Items for Discussion Under Action. Item 10A Board of Education Presentation, The Adequate Public Facilities for School Capacity Factors.
Evening ladies.
Tay, you all will have to share the microphone as best you can.
Hi, I'm Tay Harris, I'm the Long Range Planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning. And tonight, we do have guests, as Tamara has told you, from the Calver County Public Schools. The Board of Education recently approved its Educational Facilities Master Plan. This plan includes population trends and projections and residential permits and community analysis for the school. We will discuss the above referenced factors that determine influence school capacity. So briefly, we'll go over what is a public facility ordinance? It's an ordinance? Or regulations that tie development approvals to the availability and adequacy of public facilities. It's designed to manage the pace of development in an area until adequate public facilities service levels are in place or reasonably assured. It's a valuable planning tool when applied in combination with other planning tools such as exercise taxes and in context of a broader comprehensive growth management program that include policies for concentrating growth into designated areas, conserving rural areas for agricultural and natural resource protection, and directing resources to revitalize existing communities. Currently, Calver County regulates fire, emergency services, law enforcement, roads, schools, solid waste, storm drainage, and water and sewer. The APF regulations were originally adopted in 1988 and amended in 2022. The 88 regulations applied to schools and roads, in 2022, they were expanded to the list I just read. In 2022, they were also incorporated into the county code in Chapter 3, and the regulations apply to both on and off-site facilities. The Planning Commission must find all services serving a proposed subdivision residential development that they are adequate before granting final approval. There are exemptions and exceptions. The county municipal facilities, places of worship, and their residence and classrooms on unrecorded parcels that have not changed shape or size since June 29th, 1967 are exempt. Age-restricted subdivisions or development in compliance with Section 5-5 of the county's zoning ordinance, which is residential development requirements, are also exempt. A historic residence designated a Calver County Historic District where no buildable lots are created is exempt. For subdivisions of more than seven lots, the first three residential lots to be created from any parcel of record as of February 23rd, 1988 are also exempt, as well as subdivisions containing seven or fewer lots on a parcel recorded as of February 23rd, 1988. So the school APF rated capacity is calculated by formulas based on state-rated capacity formulas. For pre-K and kindergarten, it is the number of classrooms times 20, and that is room capacity, 20 students. For kindergarten, it's the number of classrooms times 22 students. Grades 1 through 5, it's the number of classrooms times 23 students. And for special education, it's the number of classrooms times 10 students. The threshold for APF regulations or for capacity is 100% or less rated capacity for each school level, and that includes elementary, middle, and high schools. There's a maximum six-year limit on development delay, and if facilities are identified as having inadequate capacity, the Department of Planning and Zoning shall notify the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. The Planning Commission policy has staff report twice to Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners in April and November on school capacity. Chesapeake Beach and North Beach are not subject to the county's APF regulations. And here is a map showing the most recent adequacy, and that this is from April 2025, and you will see that the Northern Elementary and Middle School, it's Mount Harmony and Northern Middle School are over capacity at this time.
If I may, there's some serious issues here that are worth discussion, and I'm not sure if we should do that now or further on in the presentation, but the conflict that I see is between the county's responsibility to accommodate reasonable requests for student transfers, and also the county's responsibility to assure that there are adequate public facilities where feasible to allow landowners to do permitted development. And so in the case of the map you just showed with Northern Middle and Mount Harmony, there are a small number of student transfers which raised both schools to 100%, and that in effect prevents landowners from exercising development rights that would otherwise be permitted. So, I'm not sure how to square those two county responsibilities, but there is a conflict here.
I think, Commissioner, we also have to remember we've got the six-year buffer in there.
Sure.
And in the last six years, I don't, I haven't noticed that it is applied to any landowners. That we haven't had any, we haven't declined anyone in the last six years because of that situation, if memory serves me correct.
If there was a site plan going forward in those two districts today, we would be obliged to decline it.
Right, and they would have a six-year delay.
Right.
So it wouldn't be forever then.
Right, and so, for the sake of six students transferring from a lower-capacity school to one that now is going to be over-capacity, you know, the question is, how do we balance, you know, those students wanting to transfer with landowners wanting to do development? One possible policy, and I don't know the implications of this, is simply to forbid student transfers above the 100% capacity. But again, I haven't thought through the implications of that.
To the best of my recollection, many of our students that are transferring are doing it because of the childcare issue.
Sure.
And that so many people drive north, and that's where they can, they can use, they can find childcare.
Yeah.
They've built a childcare there, is that accurate ladies?
That is accurate. Actually, our data shows that over 50% of our transfer approvals are based on a childcare request in order to accommodate the family. And quite a bit of them are in the northern region because of the location of the licensed childcare within the district. So, yes, childcare is the primary reason.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the legitimacy of the desires for people to transfer students, but I'm looking for some way to kind of square this circle.
So Northern Middle is currently under construction, is that correct? Will that improve the capacity?
That is correct. So for the last two schools that we have built, we have-
Ladies, could I ask you to state your name when you start speaking? At least the first time you talk to us, so we have it on the record. Thank you so much.
I'm Shashida Warner, I'm Director of Planning and Construction for Calver County Public Schools. So, as we did for Beach Elementary, we reacted to the issue of the over-capacity, and we designed and built a school that was rated for 578 students. As of the occupancy of that new school, those issues have been relieved. We are doing something very similar with Northern Middle School. That will have a state-rated capacity of 797. Currently, I believe the state-rated, or the local-rated capacity of Northern Middle is 700, I believe. Now, our calculations are a little bit different in terms of state-rated capacity versus local-rated capacity. There are just some minor differences. So I'm not sure what the, you know, what the local-rated capacity will end up being ultimately once that's calculated, but I would imagine it would be 797 or very close. So, we do certainly react to that when we have these issues and we're planning projects.
So I guess from the lack of further discussion that what we'll wind up doing is simply going forward with this policy conundrum of, especially if the Mount Harmony situation continues, being obliged to deny growth permits. And, you know, hopefully that will change from year to year as student enrollments fluctuate. But I just want to raise that as this is an issue.
Absolutely, and I'm Cecilia Lewis, I'm the Director of Student Services with Calver County Public Schools. Good evening, everyone. I will discuss that as a district, we do take into consideration school as well as grade-level closures. That's a part of the presentation today. So, all of that is taken into consideration as we assess every request or application for student transfer.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So I will be now discussing the District, the Public Schools Policy 3925 regarding student transfers. I will be providing an overview of the Schools District Student Transfer Policy as well as its corresponding procedure this evening. This is, as I stated, outlined in our Policy 3925, which you all had the corresponding link to reference that prior to the presentation. But I wanted to highlight a few things, that the purpose of this particular policy is to ensure that students attend school in their geographical attendance area in which they reside unless the student is granted that transfer under the policy guidelines. It's also to provide a fair and equitable process for all parents or guardians requesting transfers for their children from their home schools. And finally, it also defines the limited circumstances under which students may be granted transfers to attend schools other than their home schools. So I just wanted to emphasize that it is under limited qualifications for consideration for any type of transfer request to be approved. This policy was originally adopted in 2004. It's since been updated seven times because it is under review and approval by the Board of Education every three years. The procedure, as stated, shown here, has been updated 89 times since its adoption in 2005, and that's because it is an internal working document for management. So as we see as internal review necessary to update things, we do so. Oops, wrong way.
Next.
Alright, so now I'll discuss those limited circumstances or the basis for which a student transfer can be considered. There are very limited circumstances, those including a course of study, certain health-related conditions, before and after-school childcare, up to, up to the end of grade 8 is the only consideration. So we do not consider childcare after 8th grade and certain employee circumstances. When consideration may be given for a student to attend a school outside of his or her geographical attendance area. Student transfers are not guaranteed, and requests for student transfers must meet, they must be provided at least once every year, and can only be considered under those circumstances listed. Again, childcare, course of study, certain health-related conditions, employee circumstances, and administrative exemptions that may go through an appeals process for consideration of a possible hardship. In terms of the process for student transfer applications, that particular process begins mid-January of each year for the following school year. We have what's called open application in mid-January in which parents and guardians who are interested in a student transfer submit their transfer request through an electronic application. This is through our transfer portal, it's electronically called scrip order. The link to scrip order is available on the Calver County Public Schools website, and all information regarding the required documentation, timelines, and the applicable transfer policy and procedure are included on that application page. Questions related to student transfer and the entire process can be directed to the people personnel worker at the student's home school or the Department of Student Services. They may contact us for any questions as they're going through that application process. Student transfers do not automatically continue from year to year, and as stated previously, they are not guaranteed. Parents and guardians of students on an approved transfer must reapply in scrip order each year and must continue to meet the limited consideration requirements in order to be considered for that transfer to be ongoing. Schools then send a courtesy letter to the parents and guardians of any existing approved transfer students, reminding them of their requirement to reapply. And if a student transfer request is not submitted through scrip order, students are automated to return to their school of residence. So our system automates them back to their resident school if an application is not submitted each year. So this highlights the conversation that preceded our portion of the presentation regarding school transfer closures. Calver County Public Schools District Leadership continues to analyze several factors and will make a recommendation to the superintendent or his or her designee as to whether the school or grade should be closed to student transfers. Some of these factors include the effect of the increased numbers on the instructional program, average class size in general, the ability of the school to provide effective supporting services to the students as measured by the appropriate ratio of adults to students, as well as regional programming that may exist in certain schools, the overall delivery of instruction and the impact that they, that may have if you have increased class size, and space availability, which was discussed previously.
Tay Harris, Long Range Planner. I'd also like to add that we did include the master plan for your information only, but if you have any questions on it, Shashida's able to answer them. Does anyone have any further questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Harris, good evening. When, earlier in the slide presentation, you had Slide 7, which was the elementary school capacity. I may have been looking away, but I'm showing a Slide 8 in my paperwork, was there a Slide 8 shown on the screen?
Good question, I was just sitting here thinking, I never did speak about high school and middle school. So it should be one more, I must have-
It double-tapped.
Right, okay, so just to go over the rated capacity for middle school and high school capacity, it's the number of teaching stations times 25, which is room capacity, times 85%. And for high schools, you would add the lower number of students attending the morning or afternoon session of the Career Academy Center for each respective high school at the beginning of the grading period. And then for special education, it is the number of special education teaching stations times 10, which is also room capacity.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you for doing that.
We pay attention. I pay attention.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to thank you for running through the existing policy on transfers. I thought it was reasonable, makes a lot of sense. I, you know, we're left with, if we were to add adequate public facilities 100% capacity onto that list, you know, we would be forced to look some student's parents in the eye that has childcare issues and say, "Sorry." Or, alternatively, we'd look at a developer in the eye and say, "Sorry, you've got to wait until the school capacity drops back down 100%." And I guess on balance, we go in favor of the student and their family. And I think that's a reasonable compromise, that's where I am.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you ladies, thank you, Doctor.
So that brings us to item 11, which is the Adequate Public Facility for Schools Report. It's for Fall 2024 and Spring 2025, and this is an update.
Hi, I'm Tay Harris, Long Range Planner for the Department of Planning and Zoning. This evening, I'd just like to bring to your attention that we are correcting the Fall 2024 and the Spring 2025 APF for Schools Report update. We presented these reports to you respectively in the Fall of 2024 and Spring of 2025 in accordance with policies for admitting subdivisions under the APF ordinance for school capacity. The number of teaching stations for Northern Middle and Plum Point Middle Schools were reversed in each report. As a result, the Fall 2024- As a result, the Fall two thousand and twenty-four report incorrectly showed only Mount Harmony Elementary as having inadequate APF capacity at one hundred and six point five percent when Northern Middle School also exceeded capacity at one hundred and six percent. The Spring two thousand and twenty-five report also showed only Mount Harmony Elementary having an inadequate APF capacity at one oh six point six percent when Northern Middle School also exceeded capacity at one oh six point six percent. This memo advises the Planning Commission of the correction to reports and the resulting findings. Do you have any questions or comments?
Appreciate you catching me, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I, I do have one. As I understand it, the formal calculation of school capacity is done twice a year. If we get a development proposal in a district that is over a hundred percent sometime between that, that every six-month interval, can we go back and, to Board of Ed and say, what is the school capacity right now? And if it is below a hundred percent, you know, sometime in that interim, you know, can we grant on that basis or do we have to base our decision on that every six-month calculation?
We've been doing it every six months.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, real quick.
Unless we get a notification that they're open. If we get a notification that they're open and there's something there to record, then we can record it.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, if a, if someone presented a development plan and we're at a hundred and six percent on that day, they'd be told, nope, sorry, we may have to wait up to six years. And then, six months later goes by, the school reports that that school is now under capacity, would we preemptively reach out, or, when I say we, I mean collective, we, Calver County Government, reach out to that person and say, hey, you applied three months ago, it was denied, but now the circumstances have changed and it, it no longer applies under the APF?
We have given notification, the school report comes out so that the engineers and whatnot, they do get those reports so that they are notified, so that if they have any waiting, then they can bring those in for recording.
Gotcha, thank you.
Tomorrow, is it, would they be waiting that we wouldn't see them? If someone did come in and, and apply and it was, it's an automatic decline, would that be declined in the office or would that have to come to me? Would it be something I didn't even know about?
If it is, say it's a minor, it's done pretty much in-house. If it's a major, that's affecting, when you get the staff report, it will be mentioned in the staff report.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, that brings us now to major subdivisions for final review and action. We do not have any on the agenda tonight. That brings us to item seven, and I think we've renumbered. Applications for site plan review and action, we do not have any on the agenda tonight. The next item would be major subdivision applications for preliminary review and action. We do not have any on the agenda tonight. That brings us to Long Range Planning. It's on the agenda tonight as item nine A. Huntington, Owings, and Saint Leonard Town Center Master Plan Updates, Postcards, and Public Surveys.
Hi, I'm Tay Harris, I'm the Long Range Planner for the Department of Planning and Zoning. On February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Planning Commission endorsed the format for the Town Center Master Plans to streamline the update process. Draft Chapter One, Town Centers, Draft Chapter Two, Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan, and Draft Chapter Three, Dunkirk Town Center Master Plan are currently in the adoption phase. The Department of Planning and Zoning will mail postcards in July, next week, and post an online survey from mid-July to mid-August for the Town Center Master Plan Updates for Owings, Chapter Four, Huntington, Chapter Five, and Saint Leonard, Chapter Six. Each survey will be available on the respective Town Center Update webpage and P and Z will seek feedback from residents and businesses, businesses in the Owings, Huntington, and Saint Leonard zip codes to assess each Town Center's vision on whether the Town Center designation remains appropriate. It's, there's an estimated associated cost of seventy-five hundred dollars to produce and mail the postcards. So, I'm going to briefly just go through the Town Centers. You'll see on this map, the Town Centers are shown and pointed at with the red arrows. Owings is the most northern, Huntington is sort of centrally located, and Saint Leonard is the most south Town Center of the three Town Centers we're discussing.
Quick question on the, on the mailing policy. Is that mailing just to Town Center residents or is it also mailing to residents in areas around the Town Center?
It goes to the entire zip code.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, okay. So, in this slide, you will see the Huntington Town Center boundary, it's delineated in red. Whoops, double-click. The map on the left shows the zoning for the Town Center and then the map on the right shows the sub-districts. This includes a mixed-use core, a neighborhood district, open space, residential district, proposed roads, and village greens. This map shows the Owings Town Center existing boundary in red and the proposed boundary expansion in purple. The Town Center existing boundary, obviously it's zoned Town, Town Center, but the expansion area is zoned Employment Center and Rural Commercial District as well as Residential Neighborhood District. The Rural Commercial District represents properties that existed at the time the Town Centers were designated that are commercial in use but are not located in the Town Center. The Employment Center District was intended to be a transition commercial zone from Town Centers to residential developments. However, they have not quite worked out as intended and so Employment Centers are being incorporated into Town Centers where they exist, adjacent to the Town Centers.
I had a question on Owings. So, looking at the questionnaire going out in Owings, there's a question at the very bottom about whether recipients think that Owings should remain a minor Town Center or have the Town Center designation taken away and just have the Employment Center designated as a unemployment center outside of a Town Center. So, I'm, I'm interested, as you go forward in, in the master plan process, in, in the overall question about whether Owings should or should not remain a minor, a minor Town Center. I lived in Owings for, for nine years before moving to my present address and I got to tell you, there's no there there in, in terms of a Town Center identity in contrast to places like Huntington and Saint Leonard.
Yes, and so I would just like to clarify your statement. The last question doesn't ask if it should be a Town Center or be taken away but rather be designated as a Rural Commercial District. And this isn't a suggestion because it's an existing district in our zoning ordinance. But, we do recognize that if one or all of the Town Centers are no longer designated Town Centers, that we would analyze what's there and we would either modify the Rural Commercial District to better suit the intent or create another district that isn't a Town Center. Because, like you said, Owings is, right, and a, and a big, there's something to consider too is if you're not, if there's no water and sewer planned, the intent for Town Centers is higher density mixed use. So, that's why we're posing this question. And I did include the Owings survey in the packet for you guys, but that is all, or in the presentation. But, that's just the sample, it also, it's the same survey for both Towns, all three Town Centers.
And if, if you take away that, that Town Center designation, then you lose the opportunity to designate priority funding areas, is that right?
Not necessarily, no. Because Town Centers are different from priority funding areas.
I thought PFAs always had to be in a Town Center though, no?
No, they, they do overlap, the majority of them, but there are several PFAs that are located also in areas that are not Town, that are outside of Town Centers.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Okay, so, um, I'm not quite sure where it was, I was talking about the zoning. Alright, so then, the map on the right, you can see the sub-districts of Core Village and, I think it's Core Edge, my apologies. And Owings, Huntington, and Saint Leonard, they all have the same type of intent for uses. You know, local neighborhood, stores, lower residential, and maybe some warehousing, distribution, but limited. Okay, and here we have the Saint Leonard Town Center Boundary. I'd like to note that there is a proposed expansion area on, it's south, I'm trying to get this to go on the, it's the, it's the property, it's the Saint, it's the Saint Leonard Elementary parcel that is south and on the east side of, I believe at seven sixty-five. So, that parcel is twenty-nine acres. Although it's not delineated on this map, that is the proposed expansion area for the Town Center. Also, the Comprehensive Plan did call for expanding up at the north because what, during the Comprehensive Zoning Map Amendment, where Town Centers did not follow along parcel lines, Town Centers were adjusted to do so. So, instead of proposing an expansion area up at the north, they, it was addressed during the Comprehensive Zoning Map Update and the part, the Town Center was delineated to the parcel boundaries.
When the next round comes out on this, will the proposed expansion be included on the map?
Yes, I just, we just haven't gotten that far in our GIS.
I understand, thank you.
Yes.
For the proposed expansion, we have Saint Leonard Elementary School. Does it currently abut the lines or do we have to add in additional properties to bring it into the Town Center?
No, I'm trying to, I'm not, I don't know why, the pointer, it like goes all around but the slide. It's, it's the parcel adjacent to the southern end of the Town Center on the east side.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, of the road.
So, it's currently adjacent?
It's adjacent.
It's not going to affect any other properties? Okay, thank you so much, Tay.
Sure. Okay, so, the map on the left. The map on the left shows that the Town Center is indeed zoned Town Center and then it also has the zoning districts and it's mixed-use on top, Core District in the middle, and Residential on the bottom. And here we have a sample of one of the surveys. Basically, there, it's just fewer questions. How long have you lived in Owings? If you haven't lived in Owings, where do you live? What's your zip code? We'd like the participants to identify the biggest challenge, the biggest change they've seen in the last ten years, one word that describes what they love about the Town Center, and then to identify three of the most important topics to be addressed in the update. And then asking age of the participant and key element of each Town Center that the participant would like to see retained. And then, this is the question that David was talking about, Commissioner Burry. So, we're asking the participants to weigh in on whether they think the Town Center should remain as a Town Center or be designated as a Rural Commercial Zoning District. The next steps are, we will present our findings to you all. It will either be in September or October, it just depends on what the findings are. But, we will come back to you with the findings. Do you have any, any other questions?
Gentlemen? Thank you so much, Tay.
Alright, that brings us to item ten B on the agenda.
You're not going anywhere. Stop packing up.
Draft Chapter One, Town Centers, and Draft Chapter Two, Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan of the Master Plan of Town Centers Public Hearing.
I will have Mr. Hager tap you out when it's time to go. If he's paying attention.
He's paying attention.
He's always paying attention.
Hi, I'm Tay Harris, I'm the Long Range Planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning and tonight I'm going to talk to you about the Draft Chapter One, Town Centers, and Draft Chapter Two, Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan of the Master Plan of Town Centers, and this is a public hearing that was continued from May twenty-first. So, on February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Commission endorsed the format for the Master Plan of Town Centers to streamline the update process. On March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Department of Planning and Zoning presented Draft Chapters one and two of the Master Plan of Town Centers to the Planning Commission for review. At the April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, the Planning Commission directed staff to hold a public meeting on May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. On May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted to keep the public record open until the intersection level of service issue was addressed. A work session on traffic studies was held on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Chapter One, Town Centers, provides background information applicable to all Town Centers. Draft Chapter Two, Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan Update includes updates specific to the Prince Frederick Town Center. Both chapters incorporate comments from agencies, departments, and the public on the December two thousand and twenty-four draft received during the ninety-day comment period from June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five to September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. There is a typo in the, in the memo. Title three of the Land Use Article of the Maryland Annotated Code as Amended requires that the Calver County Planning Commission hold a public hearing and determine whether the updates to the Town Center Master Plan align with the Calver County Comprehensive Plan. In response to the Commission's direction, staff revised the Draft Chapters and made them available to the public on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five via the Calver County Town Center Master Plan webpages. Legal notices were published in the paper on May second, two thousand and twenty-five, and ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the public hearing was announced via press release and social media on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. The public hearing record has remained open since May twenty-first, two thousand, two thousand and twenty-five. The Department of Planning and Zoning has revised the Draft Chapters regarding the intersection level of service and the county's adequate public facilities for roads per the Planning Commission's direction. In addition, revisions were made to the land use categories, replacing them with sub-districts to be consistent with the Calver County Zoning Ordinance Update. So, the map on the left shows the, the, what we call the Land Use and Focus Area Map. That was in the previous version that you saw in, in May. And due to public comment, we have changed the land, the land use map to, and it's not titled here, but it has been corrected in the plan, to the proposed development districts for the Town Center. And you can see that the changes include changing, well, having the Neighborhood Residential Development Sub-District. This residential district is intended as a relative, as a relatively low single-family town, single-family townhouse and assisted living residential development district. It combines and replaces the suburban traditional and suburban village districts that were in the previous plan. Additionally, the forced overlay is a subset of the Neighborhood Residential Development Sub-District. It's comprised of a hundred and fifteen acres where Parker's Creek Headwaters is partially located, south of Westland Boulevard. This area was formerly a sub-district, but has been revised to accurately depict it as an area, as an overlay on the Neighborhood Residential Development Sub-District area. There is also the Old Town Development Sub-District. The Old Town District is intended to be centered on the civic and commercial complex and surrounding environments, environments accompanied by the local businesses, shops, residents, townhouses, assisted living, and tightly clustered, single-family dwellings. This area replaces the Main Street Sub-District area found in the previous plan and it has been expanded to the north of Maryland two-four, Main Street intersection, and to the west to, to two-four and the Prince Frederick Villas to the south, and several vacant parcels in the Town Center Boundary to the east. So, the Main Street designation is now a subset of the Old Town Development Sub-District. And this subset is the area where there will be a potential designation for And this subset is the area where there will be a potential designation for the Main Street designation per the Maryland Department of Housing and Community, Community Development. It could encompass, um, the whole entire Old Town District, or it could be a smaller sub- subset, and that would be determined at the time of the Main Street designation. And then lastly, we have a Commercial Development and Redevelopment Sub-District. This district is along Maryland two-four, and it's intended to leverage large parcels and existing infrastructure to support more dimen- dynamic land development. It replaces the New Town Redevelopment Sub-District. The change to the transportation level of service, um, is written out on this slide. I can go ahead and read it. Okay, so in Prince Frederick, signalized intersections at Cherry Oldfield Lane, M D two thirty-one, M D two four oh two, Fox Run Boulevard, Chapling Place, Traskers Boulevard, and Stokely Road, Hospital Drive are the primary branches from M D two four. There is also a signalized light for access into Armory Square along M D two four. Intersections along M D two four within the Prince Frederick Town Center and its surrounding area are of critical concern and may require operational or capacity improvements to meet adequate public facilities standards. Proposed projects that impact these intersections must demonstrate that projected traffic volumes meet the adequate public facility standards or must propose mitigation measures acceptable to the Department of Public Works and/or S H A. If no acceptable mitigation is identified or approved, the proposed project shall be deemed to have inadequate public facilities and shall be deferred for a period of six years in accordance with the provisions of the adequate public facilities as required by the Calvert Code. And then we have a footnote listing the failing intersections as of July two thousand twenty-five.
I'd like to comment here for a quick moment. The last month, Public Works, and I'm not picking on Public Works because they're not here, but last month, Public Works had a, um, "traffic," air quotes, expert in, who made a presentation. I had questions in the presentation last month, and I went back and I looked at it again, and I looked at it again. There was a lot of holes in his presentation, there was a lot of inaccuracies in his presentation. Um, I, I would encourage, if Public Works thinks so, or if they went back and look at it, they may want to look at possibly a different person to make the, a presentation or a separate presentation. Because for him to sit there and say the things that he said in reference to the lights through Prince Frederick on Route Four, that they were all computerized, that they were all interlinked, and they were all synced. It, we know that that's not true. So, and he, he sat there and he said it was, and I questioned him about it, his answer was, well, they have to be maintained. So, I'm just bringing it up at this point because we're talking about those failing intersections. And since that meeting, on at least seven occasions, I've sat at a red light at Traskers Boulevard heading south between the hours of six AM and seven AM at a red light, no one going through Traskers Intersection, and the light at Fox Run going through two revolutions of the light while we're sitting at Traskers at a red light with nobody going through. So, maybe it is maintenance, maybe it's not, but something's got to be looked at, that whole corridor there. But again, I know it's, it's not the exact best time and place, but it was brought up, so I wanted to insert. Thank you.
The proposed language here addresses my concerns, so I wanted to thank, uh, P N Z. One question, um, given, uh, the, the gray areas in Maryland A P F O law, um, I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, if you've had a chance to do a legal review of this language and, and if you see any, uh, any potential pitfalls.
Off the bat, the first thing I would say is it shall be deferred for a period of up to six years. Not a period of six years. The pitfalls, um, generally are, does it, does it represent a taking? And the Maryland case law is pretty firm that the deferral for A P F O for a period, a set term like that would not rise to that level. So, no, there's, there's no alarm that's going off in my head about what's, what's written there, um, other than it's a period of up to. And that's really the only thing that I was looking at when I was reviewing this, was it does, do we have a condemnation problem?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the recommendation, I, I also would like you to just, uh, number one, should not be there. We have held the public hearing and it is continuing tonight. So, uh, the last four options are what you need to consider. Up, after the conclusion of oral testimony, decide whether to keep the record open for the receipt of additional written testimony or close the record. Options include close the record the night of the public hearing after the conclusion of public testimony, keep the record open for a set amount of time, for example, one week, two weeks, et cetera, close the record, discuss the comments and the proposed amendments, and then vote on the proposed amendments regarding the adoption of the proposed amendments.
Oh, when, when last we met, uh, there was, uh, a, a discussion about how long to keep the public comments period open. Is that now closed, or, or is that still going forward?
The record is now, will close when you, when there's an official motion. At the last one, we actually made it so, or I should say, you made it so that it, it, the record stays open until this, until this meeting.
Oh, okay, that was the criteria, that, that's.
So, if you look at the, the suggested motions, that's, that leads off, close the record, because it is still open.
So, do we have anyone here this evening that want to make a comment?
No.
There is no one online.
So that's that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that we close the record. On the Draft Chapter One, Town Centers and Draft Chapter Two, Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan are consistent with the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan and recommend adoption by the Board of Calvert County Commissioners.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is anyone against? Passes unanimously. All righty then.
Thank you.
Now, now you may pack up. Thank you so much for your perseverance.
That brings us to item ten C, Calvert County zoning ordinance, proposed text amendment twenty-five dash thirteen.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, sir. Gentlemen.
I'm Will Hager, I'm Planner Three with the Department of Planning and Zoning, and with me to my right is Ron Marney. He's our envi- our environmental planning regulator and subject matter expert on the critical area. So we'll begin tonight with some background. A comprehensive rewrite and update of the zoning ordinance was adopted earlier this year and came into effect March first, two thousand twenty-five. Text amendments are being per- uh, being proposed to address updates required by the Critical Area Commission following their comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance. And we're here tonight to promote, uh, to discuss, um, the proposed text amendments twenty-five dash thirteen. So, the revisions shown on this slide are adding a couple state, additional statements to the Purpose and Goals section of the Critical Area Article. They state, "The goals of the Critical Area Program are to accomplish the following: reduce vulnerability to the impacts of climate change and incorporate measures to improve the climate resiliency of the Chesapeake and Atlantic coastal bays and its tributaries, and ensure an equitable distribution of the burdens and benefits of development mitigation, restoration, conservation, and adaptation to climate change with the critical area." The revisions presented on this slide change the requirement that the critical area provisions of the zoning ordinance and critical area maps be comprehensively reviewed from every six years to every ten years, and clarifying that if the county requires a one-year extension to the ten-year deadline, they must notify the Critical Area Commission in writing.
Quick question on that, Will. If we're reducing the requirements of the county government to create the report by over fifty percent, why are we then additionally adding a one-year, a possible one-year extension on top of that? So we'd be going from at least every, it says at least every six years to now at least every ten, but if you need an extra year, we can make it eleven as long as you tell us ahead of time.
Or, or was the extension included in the six years? Was there an extension there?
This is added text, red is added text, I believe.
Yeah, that, that's correct, the red is the added text. This might be a better question for Ron.
This language came directly from D N R, and as with most of their processes, there would typically be a, a capacity to request some form of extension in the event that, uh, you needed it, simply because if you go through your adoption process and perhaps you're not going to make that deadline, you can simply tell them, well, you need a little more time just to get through that process based on when you start.
Are we downsizing the amount of people that are working in this division? Because if it's already every six years, and we're going to every ten years, that's a pretty significant change in and of itself. I could see it, what you're saying is add the extra year extension. Okay, the state requires it, if that's the case, okay, fine. But why go from six to ten in the first place?
The state felt that this was necessary based off of, of, it's not just Calvert. So this language is something that they would provide to literally every jurisdiction in the critical area, and it's based off of their capacity to handle it and actually the necessity of making changes. So, how often are you going to do a comprehensive rewrite of your conference?
So this is coming from the state then, is what you're saying?
Oh, yeah, all of these texts.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Came from D N R, literally all of them are from D N R.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That, that answers a lot of questions, because that, that answers who's responsible and irresponsible at the state.
Yeah, it's aligning it with other, for this one in particular, though, it's aligning with a lot of other requirements in our comp plans every ten years.
Okay, that, that makes a lot more sense now that this is a state issue, not a county issue. Thank you.
So, I, I, I got a question. So, was the Critical Area Commission, um, sent this information when we, um, moved to send it out to, um, the other jurisdictions and for comment? Why, I mean, why, why didn't we address?
That's a great one.
Why aren't we addressing this?
He's got an answer.
I, I actually provided this to them multiple times. They actually saw the draft language before anyone else did, because as we were drafting it, we worked with them to try and make sure that they were satisfied with it. Despite that, I still didn't get it until I had to submit for the comprehensive review, which I couldn't do until the ordinance was adopted. So they had seen this at least, I believe, eight to ten times before the ordinance was adopted, including in-person meetings.
You got used, you got used.
Yes.
Thank you, Ron.
So I wanted to, to break apart this. So there's the, uh, the review of the zoning ordinance, the critical area provisions in the zoning ordinance, uh, now every ten years. Uh, and then there's a critical area map review. And so, the question is, given the uncertainties in, uh, climate change, including, uh, coastal subsidence, uh, in, in some areas, particularly in the Southland County, um, possible, uh, changes in sea level rise depending on what's happening in polar regions. Again, there's a lot of uncertainty about how quickly the shoreline in Calvert will change. And the question is, uh, you know, based on the science that you're seeing, is a ten-year map review, uh, adequate given those uncertainties? Or is six years, uh, something we should stick with?
Ten years, just the regulatory minimum. If we felt there were changes or we were seeing data that necessitated something earlier, we could absolutely initiate that on the local level.
Okay, that, that addresses my concern.
It wouldn't prohibit us from doing that.
You, you wouldn't think things would change that quickly, on, on the other hand, you know, one.
One hurricane.
Yeah.
A large storm event, and you can see some big, big changes in hydrology.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, excellent point. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the slide before we move forward? So the revision shown on this slide state that the county may grant a change to the critical area land classi- to, uh, critical area land classification on proof of, of mistake if the proposed critical area classification conforms to the state critical area mapping criteria based on land uses and existence either as of December first, nineteen eighty-five, if part of the originally mapped critical area, or as of the date of the land, uh, as of the date the land was included in the critical area due to a critical area boundary mapping effort, follows Calvert County mapping methodology for critical area classification at the time of mapping and is consistent with the purpose policies and goals of the critical area law and regulations. And the revision shown on this slide may be the, um, some of the more substantive revisions included in this text amendment. Uh, this provision is in regard to lock coverage limitations in the limited development area. The new text in this provision states that for development that uses pervious materials that have been approved by the commission as part of a local program, the limits established in this subsection may be exceeded by up to five hundred square feet using permeable pavers or permeable pavement installed to the manufacturer's specifications. The degree of perviousness shall be agreed upon by the Department of Planning and Zoning and shall fall within the ranges as defined in section two dash two of this ordinance. And on this slide, we have, um, I'll get to that slide right there. So on this slide, we have the definitions of permeable pavements and permeable pavers, which are being proposed to be added to section two dash two. Permeable pavements are an alternative that may be used to reduce imperviousness. While there are many different materials commercially available, permeable pavements may be divided into three basic types: porous, bituminous asphalt, pervious concrete, or permeable interlocking concrete pavements. Perme- permeable pavements typically consist of a porous surface, coarse, and open grated stone base, subbase, or sand drainage system, and infiltrates into the surrounding soil. Permeable pavements significantly reduce the amount of impervious cover, provide water quality and groundwater recharge benefits, and may help mitigate temperature increases. Perviousness, perviousness ranges from ten fif- fifty percent depending on the product. Permeable pavers are, uh, surfaces that can replace asphalt and concrete and can be used for driveways, parking lots, and walkways. The two broad categories of alternative pavers are paving blocks and other surfaces, including gravel, cobbles, wood, mulch, brick, and natural stone. Perviousness ranges from ten to fifty percent depending on the product.
Well, with a range that wide on the perv- the perviousness range, do we have anything specific to point people in a direction of what they're supposed to use, or is that completely their choice? Do they all count the same, one that, one that's giving up ten percent, or one that's giving up fifty percent?
That range provides flexibility both for staff and the public. So we want to allow the customers to actually try and figure out what works for them in their application and what's actually available. Perhaps one paver might be more performative, but it may either be cost prohibitive for someone that's on a fixed budget or income like a lot of our elderly population, or perhaps it simply isn't readily available. Um, in that case, that's why we have that range, is so we can show a net benefit but while also making it functional for the public. And it also makes it flexible for staff, because we can sit there, we can negotiate a bit with them.
Thank you.
Okay, and on, uh, this slide, the revisions are applicable to the Growth Allocation Section of the Critical Area Article. And they state that when locating new intensely developed areas or limited development areas, to locate those new I D A and L D A areas outside of areas vulnerable to climate change as identified by the county, unless the county proposes and the commission approves measures that assess climate resiliency and vulnerability and incorporate citing, design, construction, and other natural features to significantly enhance the climate resiliency and reduce vulnerability. And, uh, in reviewing map amendments or refinements involving the use of growth allocation, the county shall consider the following factors: environmental impacts on underserved or overburdened communities.
The language about, uh, areas vulnerable to climate change, uh, does that need? The language about areas vulnerable to climate change, does that need further definition? Because, I mean, if you look at some of the hundred-year storms that we've had more frequently than a hundred years, you can make the case that every area in Calvert County to one degree is vulnerable to climate change. So is there a way to get the definition more specific?
This language didn't, this language does, again, come from the state. So that is actually something that we were concerned with about as to whether it should even specifically be worried about that, specifically. In the end, the decision from staff was that this would not, it wouldn't be overly impair, it wouldn't be overly impairing our ability to do a growth allocation for two reasons. One, growth allocations are exceedingly rare. You only have a set amount of it to begin with. And we already have a lot of restrictions in terms of how you can do it, because it has to be for bona fide public purposes, and that's typically limited to expansions for Solomons Town Center or major economic drivers such as the nuclear power plant. So since we haven't had this be an issue for a while, and based off of the fact that we'd have to coordinate with the state in terms of what they're going to define it as anyways, we didn't feel in the end that it was necessary to go into further detail, because we could have our own definition, and when we go through the comprehensive review for that map amendment, if the state disagrees, we would be in that same position anyways.
Okay. The county is still on the hook with this language to formally identify whether an area is or is not vulnerable to climate change based on undefined criteria.
Yes, and if you're looking for just a rough concept of what that would be, it would be akin to what you would see for floodplain requirements. We would want to avoid those areas of highest risk, and that would be a really good feature to try and help identify that, is what are the FEMA map flood hazard areas, what are the areas of highest map risk? And we would say build outside of that, because we would already be doing that anyways.
Legal counsel question, are we opening up a can of worms with language that may be this vague, or is Ron's explanation adequate, do you think?
I'm sorry, could you?
Yeah, so the issue is that this language puts the county on the hook for determining what areas are and are not vulnerable to climate change based on not formally defined criteria.
No, it does not put us on. And the reason I say that is, first of all, this is our plan. Second thing is, with all due respect, it's still speculative. Who can call in when there's going to be a hundred-year flood event or a hundred-year storm? The best the county can do is take the available data, put the plan together, and put it out so the public has access to it. And that really is our due diligence. I mean, we have two people here who sit and work on these floodplans and make sure that we've identified everything using the criteria, the feds and the state on down. So.
So the developer's going to yell foul, that's his opportunity to yell foul.
Yeah, good luck.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
Excuse me, is there a sequencing of maps that could be shown to people, like in the last fifteen years, how the flood zone has changed?
Yeah, we have all the past firm panels, because that mapping is done by FEMA. I'm actually required by federal law to maintain those firms in my office, and we also have mapping available that is digital in format if customers were to request that.
I'd like to thank Mr. Brey for bringing that up in paragraph fourteen, because as I read it, I've read it ten times over the last five minutes, it seems like. And I look at it as there's a whole lot of ambiguity and vagueness in there, where it says, "Areas outside of areas vulnerable to climate change as defined by the county." That is giving the county a hundred percent right to define what climate change is and what vulnerabilities a particular piece of property could have. I think there's too much power in that sentence personally, you know, given to the county, because there's just, it's so vague. One particular person can come in and say, "Well, I think climate change is anywhere in the county that's going to be over a hundred degrees more than thirty days out of the year." You know, one particular person can make any argument based on that. Might be ludicrous, but they could still do it.
Unless there are any other comments on this slide in particular, I'll move on to some definitions. So these are some terms that were used on the previous slide. We have climate resiliency here, and that's defined as the capacity of a natural system to maintain function in the face of stresses imposed by climate change. Climate resiliency includes adapting a natural system to better, to be better prepared for future climate impacts, including sea level rise, saltwater intrusion, wetland migration, storm surge, precipitation, influence flooding, and other extreme weather events. And the Critical Area Commission wants us to refer to definitions in the Maryland Environmental Code for the definitions for overburdened community and underserved community. And the revision on this slide is in regard to habitat protection areas, and it simply states that maps identifying these specific habitat protection areas are maintained by the Department of Natural Resources Wildlife and Heritage Division. The most recent updated inventory was completed on March tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and recommendations contained within W H S's report Habitat Protection Areas for the Calvert County Critical Area and associated maps are hereby incorporated into this ordinance. And on this slide, we have revisions to the definitions of density and dwelling unit. The Critical Area Commission wants us to make the following revisions to the definition of dwelling unit, so we would now state one or more rooms forming a single habitable unit with facilities for living, sleep, cooking, sanitation, and other activities associated with daily life. Examples of dwelling units include but are not limited to accessory dwelling units such as a living quarters for a domestic or other employee or tenant, an in-law or accessory apartment, a guest house, or a caretaker residence. And we had some concerns with how that revision would impact our definition of density, so we proposed to add the following statement to clarify our existing policy on density. Unless otherwise specifically stated, accessory dwelling units do not count towards the permitted density of a parcel.
By the way, that change to the density language for accessory dwelling, I think is a great idea. I think that it should be the policy of the county to encourage more accessory dwellings. And otherwise, you know, we bump up against those density limitations. I think that's one partial solution to the housing problem in Calvert.
Yeah, that is our existing policy, and that's why we wanted to make sure that that was clear, because we do think it is important.
Got it.
So on the next slide, we have the definition of project approvals, and it's proposed to be revised to specify that the term includes approval of both preliminary and final subdivision And some very minor revisions on this slide, which just adjusts some of the wording in the definition of lot coverage, but these aren't substantive changes. So this work session was for informational purposes, and staff is going to be proceeding with the public adoption process, and we'll be scheduling a joint public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners, which I believe is tentatively scheduled for next month, August twentieth.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do we have any questions or comments, gentlemen? Thank you so much. We appreciate all your help tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to item eleven B on the agenda, site plan and subdivision list. You have received both of those lists. They are for informational purposes only. Are there any questions or comments on those lists? Hearing none, that moves us to item twelve, public comment. We do not have anyone online or in the audience for public comment at this time. That moves us on to item thirteen, which is adjournment.
Gentlemen, may I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
No objections? We stand closed. Thank you so much for your help today.